Call to order the Town of Air Select Board meeting for Monday, November 4th, 2024. This meeting slash hearing of the Air Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with a particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom and Channel 8. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID number 897-9080-0793, or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carley Antonellis, Assistant Town Manager, at atm@air.ma.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 100, prior to the meeting. If we could all stand for the pledging meeting?
I point the lead into the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Any amendments to the agenda? Mr. Pumperhead.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. At the 6:15 mark, the Department of Public Works report the execution of contract. We're asked to just withdraw that. The DPW director hasn't received the contract paperwork yet, so we'll move that to the meeting on the 19th.
So moved?
Okay, yeah, a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair says aye. No announcements this evening? Anybody here for public input? Okay, not seen any. I'll turn it over to you for the open the public here for the application for multiple amendments from Page More Cafe, Inc., doing business as Billiards Cafe at 39 Main Street.
You correctly read the whole thing. Town of Air, notice to public hearing, Air Select Board. The Air Select Board will conduct an in-person and remote public hearing on Monday, November 4th, 2024, at 6:00 PM at the Air Town Hall, 1 Main Street, Air Mass, 01432, regarding an application for multiple amendments of current general law, Chapter 138, Section 12, general on-premises, on-premise from Page More Cafe Incorporated, doing business as Billiards Cafe, C. Jonathan Moore, manager, for premises located at 39 Main Street, Air Mass, 01432, including change of officers, directors, LLC managers, change of stock interests, and change of manager. For Zoom call-in information, please contact atm@air.ma.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 100. And you indicated we didn't have to read the rest of it?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anybody here for?
So I don't see anyone here, but this, what happened with this application a couple, I don't know, a month ago, we did this. What happened was when Mr. Moore's attorney called the ABCC, they gave him the wrong package to fill out. So this is just correcting that.
Okay.
So there was no issues last time, there's no issues this time. They're not recharging him to apply because it was a mistake on their end. You know, all of our department heads have looked at it, so I would recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions?
Just seems clerical.
Yeah. Yeah. Any questions from the public? Okay, if not, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that the application for multiple amendments from Page More Cafe Incorporated, doing business as Billiards Cafe on 39 Main Street, be approved as submitted.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. It is approved. Take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn from public hearing regarding Page More Cafe.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Next item, public hearing for calendar year 2025, solid waste transfer station rates.
Okay. There it is. I was looking forward to it. Town of Air, notice to public hearing, Air Select Board, calendar year 2025, solid waste transfer station rates, public hearing.
The Air Select Board will be conducting a remote and in-person public hearing on Monday, November 4th, 2024, at 6:05 PM, Air Town Hall, 1 Main Street, Air Mass. The Select Board, in their legal capacity as the rate-setting authority for the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund Transfer Station, will hear the report and recommendations of the town's rate review committee, take public comments, and consider approval and adoption of the calendar year 2025 solid waste transfer station rates. For Zoom call-in information, please contact Assistant Town Manager Carley Antonellis at 978-772-8220, extension 100, or atm@air.ma.us.
Dan?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board Members.
Do you want me to?
You can do it. So on behalf of the Rate Review Committee, I've put together a presentation very similar to years past on the recommended rates, so we can go forward. So just a reminder, the Rate Review Committee purpose is to evaluate and recommend transfer station water and sewer rates to the Select Board. The goal of this meeting is to provide the recommendation for the transfer station rates, so that's the purview at this time. Copyright from the website as well. Next. Rate Review Committee members, here's a list of the committee members, and I'd just like to point out, we did have an SIU representative just recently joined from Nassauia, Mr. Justin Lee, so we're grateful to have him, especially his water and sewer rates are the next, coming up towards the end of this year, we'll start looking at those, as well as the other representatives we have. I'm not going to go through the list, but next on this slide. So a brief overview of the transfer station and solid waste budget. It's an operation, it's an enterprise fund, so separate accounting, fees and rates are charged for the services, the solid waste services. Revenue is primarily obtained from two sources, the annual permit sticker sales and the pay-as-you-throw bag sales, the blue bags, and a portion of the budget is subsidized by the general The operation at the transfer station, there's trash, municipal solid waste disposal, zero sort recycling, so basically anything that's recyclable can go into one bin, except our cardboard up there. Food waste collection, bulk items, yard waste, the swap shed, book, textile, and metal recycling, among other major things that are services up there. Here's the current fees. The annual sticker permit for those under 65 years of age is 105, 65 and over, 60 for senior citizen rate, and then we have second permit, 30, one day, 15, our current bag fees, as well as the bulk tag fees, or bulk tag, I guess how much one bulk tag is worth is $5. Here's the next slide shows the actual fees for bulk items, so I won't go through the list, but kind of a breakdown briefly, the FY '25 solid waste budget, and it's very similar to previous years. You'll notice the blue are the wages, 25% of the budget comes from wages, disposal and recycling, which has increased since, you know, about 2018 has gone up pretty good is 31% of the budget, and then the remainder is filled out by a few other sources, but wages and the hauling, disposal, recycling are the most costly. So the revenue needed through the sales of our permit stickers and the pay-as-you-throw bags. So what we do is we look at the total budget, the general fund subsidy that was authorized at town meeting in April for FY '25, retained earnings were also authorized at FY '25 town meeting, and then other revenue sources we know are where we're going to be receiving to calculate, hey, here's how much we need to get from pay-as-you-throw bags and the stickers. So that turns out to be about $312,441, that's what we want to get from the bags and the stickers to have a break-even budget. I can go to the next slide. So just some notable budget considerations, the contracts for solid waste disposal and recycling collection, they've increased over the years due to increased hauling and disposal costs. We are in a current three-year contract, so you know, this year wouldn't expect anything out of the ordinary cost-wise. Recycling commodities market, this is kind of your wild card. Are we paying for recycling? Are we getting paid for recycling? What's the commodities market like? It's been more favorable than in past years recently, so our costs have gone down a little bit, which is good. Tough one to forecast, but it's been better. General cost increases due to inflation, that's, you know, in every sector. Tax levy retained earnings subsidies, so obviously those are part of what we factor into, I mentioned on the previous slide, and then our user trends, how many people are paying to use the station. So here's trends of waste and recycling expenses, I mentioned since, so you can look back here to FY '17, these are what our costs were. The yellow would be for waste disposal, so trash disposal, hauling and disposal. You can see that's significantly increased to FY '24, and you can see recycling as well, used to be down close to $30,000 back in FY '17, you know, that'd be our budget for the year, and it got up all the way over $70,000 in FY '20, which has kind of leveled off in that region, you know, based on the recycling commodities market. Next, this is transfer station users, the permits we've been selling by group, so the top line, the blue one, is all of the sticker sales combined. The red line is your regular permits, we call them, the 105 non-senior. The green line are your senior permit sales, the number of permits sold, and the purple is your second sticker. So, you know, it's been pretty, pretty level on the trend, nothing too high, too low, significantly to tell about. We can go to the next. So Rate Review Committee uses a rate model to estimate the revenue generated from the permit and pay-as-you-throw bag sales, so kind of using past year's trends on the bag sales and past year trends on the number of users we've had at the station forecasting ahead. So we look at many different rate scenarios for modification to the permit and bag fees to meet that $312,000 number that I showed on a previous slide for the revenue required. Next. Okay, so in short, so the Rate Review Committee evaluated many different scenarios, I mentioned, for the bag fees and permit fees, and under the current rates, it's anticipated to generate the $309,425. So this is short of the 312,000, I don't have the number up there, by about $3,000, so it's very close. So some key notes from the discussion that the committee had was the collective bargaining agreement for the DPW union, that actually expires at the end of this fiscal year, so we'll soon be going into negotiations for a new agreement. And so as part of that, we're going to be looking at the work hours to try to reduce the cost on that end of the wages cost. There's potential future reduction in cost there, that's what I mean by review of hours. And then revenue from bulk tag sales, so I think it was two years ago, we increased the price of bulk tags, of bulk items, to be more reflective of current prices and what we need to be able to, to be able to break even on those and even potentially get some revenue into the solid waste budget. So that's been around $10,000 now per year, and it used to be maybe a third of that, not even. So that's been significant, so I did factor that into this, this number we're at with the short revenue required, $3,000, so that's something to kind of, we'll be looking at as we go forward in the future, aside from just the stickers and the blue pay-as-you-throw bags. Annual solid waste budget versus the actual, I don't have a graphic of it up here, but we're typically under budget, you know, we're budget conscious, so $3,000 is not a lot to be, to be making up in a budget year, to be making sure we don't spend. So, you know, with that, those kind of three components there, some other discussion as well, the Rate Review Committee did recommend no changes to the fees, feeling that, you know, with a potential reduction in cost in the future, that's potential based on the collective bargaining agreement, we don't want to raise the fees now and then potentially next year, we're actually, you know, we don't have to make up as much revenue because there's a cost reduction. Next slide, so recommendation, no change to fees, so these are the same fees that were shown on the slide near the beginning of the presentation, and, and just the list of recent fee increases as well, but I won't go through that right now, this is something that committee takes into consideration as well as we look at, as our annual fees. Okay, estimated cost to residents, so every year I put this slide on here. Transfer station, assuming a permit of $105, plus say $350 for bags, so that'd be 70 medium bags, it would cost a household about $455 per year. So I did put a caveat there, an asterisk, above costs include assumptions on the number of bags used, it would vary by user and family. For example, my family, we use a transfer station, we use medium bags, like one per week, so we'd probably actually be a little lower, family of four, but everyone, every family's different in usage. Senior permit similarly, just doing a projection and assumptions, around 160 per year if we're accounting for small bags, could be more than that if more bags are used, but the permit would always hold the 60. And then a private trash hauler, the least expensive one I was able to find was around $600 per year. You know, I would keep in mind, it doesn't have all the services the transfer station does as well, as it's just recycling and trash, and I'm sure you probably have to pay for bulk items and things like that as well. Is that it? Yep, that's it.
So, just looking at this, the slide that says the recommendation, no change to fees, and it says annual permit, 105, but it says $5 increase?
Oh, that's an error. Sorry about that. It should just say annual permit and no change.
And another question that I've noticed is, you know, the different bags, they're not linear in cost, so, you know, the 15-gallon bag is $4, you know, opposed to the 50-gallon bag, that's 6. So, you know, it, it kind of follows like almost an economies of scale, however, that wouldn't really come into play with this. So it's 26 cents per gallon if you get a 15-gallon one, all the way down to 12 cents per gallon if you get a 50-gallon bag. So I was just curious on how that is figured out.
That's a good question, Chris, and I, you know, I'd have to kind of look at how we've done it in the past, because we really haven't raised them since I've been in, in charge, so I'd really want to look at it and kind of get you a better answer. I don't, I don't really want to speculate right now, but I could do that.
We've often used the bags when, instead of raising the permit, we've used the bags to increase, to get our income. Theory being is that people might conserve more, if the price of the bag goes up, maybe they'll compost a little bit more, recycle a little bit more, so they're not using that many bags rather than the permit. But I can tell you the consensus is everybody hates the bags, but it's, it is what it is.
Yeah, I mean, I have no issue with charging pay-as-you-throw, it's more just, in benchmarking kind of the other programs that I saw in other towns, it is linear, so it's like you're paying the same price per gallon, it's just, you know, different bags, so it's the same cost, and it just comes to my head because sometimes I think, you know, the 15-gallon bag's nice, when I just want to throw away a couple small things, but I say, actually, I'm paying more if I do that rather than stuff full of 50-gallon and throw that. So that's, you know, the only thing that I've really kind of, just stuck up to me is just wondering, you know, how that got figured.
I think I'm not going to speculate, but what we pay for the bags to be generated and furnished, I'd have to look at that, because I'm guessing it costs a little more to furnish the 15 gallons as opposed to, you know, 55, but I have to look at what our, I don't have the price on the top of my head, but that would probably factor into it. Yeah.
Yeah.
When we're talking scale, yeah.
No, I mean, you know, I add the caveat that we, we have no idea what we're going to end up having to do next year. I, you know, one of the things that the committee talked about is, you know, as far as the retained earnings, what did we use, like 30, about 37,000 this year? Why don't we use 50,000? So that is something that will be looked at, so when it goes to town meeting, you know, we might be asking to use a little bit more of the retained earnings. We tend to keep the subsidy at probably just under 1% of the town budget, not, don't, we don't count the school when that's added in, okay, just to, to make sure everybody knows, because we don't, we don't want to go any higher than that. And when the other things that stopped us from even looking at changing any prices this year is, one, we were going to have a very small shortfall, so we were like, I think we can handle that. But two, with the contracts coming up, we have, we'll have more information next year to look at as far as, you know, that could affect a change that needs to be brought forward to say, hey, we're going to, you know, raise this, this much and everything. So, but yeah, so we, we've tried not to rate, we don't, I think we've gone a couple years without raising the rates, which is, which is good. We try, we try not to raise the rates unless we really need to.
I mean, overall, I mean, inflation over the past three years, I have like, you know, 14%, and this is like nine and a half over the three years here, so I mean, it's, it's good, it's below what inflation is, so overall, it's excellent.
Okay. Now, there's no more questions? I don't have any. I think every resident will be happy not to have it be raised. I'll take a motion?
Okay. I will make a motion to accept the calendar year 2025 solid waste for the transfer, transfer station rates as recommended by the Rate Review Committee.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
And with that, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
All right, so that brings us to our town manager's report. Mr. Pumperhead.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. You have in your packet the town warrants that were reviewed and approved since the Select Board last met. For the administrative update, just a couple of things. Reminder, tomorrow is the election and polls are open 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM here at Town Hall. The capital planning committee is going to meet on Wednesday, November 6th, at 5:00 PM. All of the capital requests were due October 31st, and the committee will be meeting to start an initial review and to schedule who they want to meet with. We'll have all of the capital plans up on the website tomorrow, and the committee is going to be using the capital, the ClearGov Capital Module this year through the capital planning process. There's going to be an important senior center public input meeting on Thursday, November 7th, at 7:00 PM in the Great Hall. The committee, the senior center site selection building committee, will be looking for public input on the proposed senior center project, as well as to present important information. The 71 Sandy Pond Working Group meeting, we're looking to schedule a meeting the week of November 11th, we're just finalizing to nail that down for the week of November 11th. That'll also be posted per the Select Board's charge of those meetings will be publicly posted, so we'll get, looking forward to getting that underway. And then coming attractions, November 19th, at the Select Board meeting will be the tax classification hearing with the Board of Assessors, and the senior center site selection and building committee would like to come to the board for a discussion and update on some funding questions and timeline questions, so there'll be information in your packet to that, to that effect. I just want to offer a brief personnel update to the board since the board last met. Max Goodwin, our new IT coordinator, started November 1st and hit the ground running, and as mentioned, he'll be working with Ms. Knox till December 31st to transition the department, so that, that's moving ahead. As mentioned to the board, the town social worker, Brittany Bowdre, resigned on October 31st to take a position closer to her home and to pursue her, her graduate degree, so we are going to be reassessing the needs of that position, it was a new position, it was sort of the first year, we'll advise back to the board as far as, as next steps with respect to that position. The Director of Economic and Community Development position remains open at this time, only as we're internally reevaluating the scope of the position, and we'll advise the board, of course, on next steps with respect to that as we move forward. I also, the Assistant Parks Director position, we have posted that position, as the board will recall, we've discussed this a few times since July, that the position has been a priority of the Parks Commission and the Parks Department for a few years now. The previous director, Mr. Thomas, announced his retirement in April of May, April of May this year, so at that time, we had planned that he would continue in that position as the director. When he left, it further necessitated or brought up front the need for an assistant position for that department, as that department has grown both in scope in terms of programs, personnel, and if you look at any of our other major departments, of which the Parks Department certainly is, there's the manager and an assistant, and, and so it moved up quickly. And so the first thing we did, we put together a transition bridge from May to November 1st, in which Mr. Thomas worked with Ms. Ernst to orientate the department, similar to what we're doing in IT and have done in other departments in the past. The commission, the original plan, as I had reported to the board, was to, for the fall town meeting, to make a request for supplemental funding based on the certification of free cash to fund this position. Yes, it's a mid-year request, which is not always common, but given the unique transition in the department and the needs, the commission, and I agreed, felt that it was important. Unfortunately, free cash didn't get certified in time for town meeting, as I reported, and then working with the town accountant and the finance manager, Parks Director, commission, we were able to put together a plan that would meet the needs of the department sooner than July 1st, have an assistant in place for the spring and summer planning for the department, and spring is one of the busiest times for the department. And looking at the Parks Department budget, there was, we need to look at existing funding for personnel purposes from December to June 30th, we would need $77,712 for both positions. There's currently $89,070 remaining in the personnel wage lines of the Parks Department budget, and also the part-time positions, some of them that are filled in sort of the off-season, could be funded through the revolving fund on a temporary part-time basis if needed. The takeaway is, there is adequate funding in the Parks Department budget to cover this. It was a mid-year decision. The full position will be in the FY '26 budget that we'll be putting together for December 1st for consideration for town meeting in April. It's a grade nine position on the town's non-union personnel grid, which is a 56,000 to 59,000 entry, entry pay range, and as I mentioned, the budget can carry both of those positions. We've advertised the position with the deadline of November 22nd, that's preference, it'll remain open until filled, and the anticipated budget impact for FY '26, when we put this in the budget, will be approximately $60,000. So I just wanted to, to clarify, I know we've been talking about the assistant position for some time, that's sort of the plan where we're at moving, moving forward. The Parks Director would like to come to the November 19th meeting to just give a brief The Parks Director would like to come to the November 19th meeting to just give a brief update of what the Parks Department has been doing, just as an informational update, and so we look forward to having Sarah there. So some personnel changes, which are inevitable, but also, I believe, a proactive plan to address those. That's the conclusion of my administrative update. I do have one action item this evening, unless there's questions from the board on any personnel or other administrative matters?
Questions?
Okay. The item, the action item, that you have in your packet, and I know that selectmen, Livingston and Taviris were at the exciting groundbreaking for 12 Newton Street for Habitat for Humanity, and that project is really moving forward. You have in your packet a request from Ms. Carolyn Reed, the Executive Director, who is here this evening, from October 17th, requesting that the Select Board consider a waiver for the water and sewer connection fees for the 12 Newton Street Habitat House, which totals the connection fees $21,600. And upon receipt of her request, both the DPW Director and I reviewed the request. As the board will probably recall, the last Habitat project on Central Ave, the board also waived those fees where Habitat is a nonprofit. The admission of affordable housing is of key importance to the town. You have a second memo from October 30th from the DPW Director, having reviewed it as well, and recommending that waiver. So our recommendation is that the Select Board vote to waive the water and sewer connection fees for 12 Newton Street, and Ms. Reed is here this evening, if the board have any questions for her?
Any questions?
I do not.
Nope. I don't have any questions. I'll take a motion?
I'll make a motion that the board approve the request to waive the connection fee for the Habitat for Humanity, what's the number?
12.
12 Newton Street, as requested.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says, quietly says aye.
Absolutely.
It's looking good over there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're very busy over there today.
You, 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 look, turn your head for like five minutes, and you turn back, and you're like, whoa. Yeah, so, yeah, nice.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you all, thank you.
Pauline, it's nice to see you here in person, but I was expecting feedback on our new system. Wait till the 19th.
But I gotta say, pictures on the right look very nice. Not the one on the left. Where, when I'm on iPad, it'll show up.
Right here. This is the Zoom screen.
So this is so we don't have to share.
So if we shared screens, it would appear. So we'd see it there, you would see it there. Yeah. But yeah, that, that one is...
So Robert, remember the fight we had to get the first monopad?
I remember the first time Gary was using it, and somebody tried to dial in, and we were all like scared, should we answer this? What do we do? We were scared of what might happen. I remember that.
I'll be here to support Carolyn. Thank you, Robert, thank you.
Absolutely.
No problem.
Good work you're doing over there.
Mr. Chair, just before I conclude my report, I just wanted to mention, I wanted to thank Chuck Schultz, who I saw was here earlier, the facilities director, for all of his work in making these improvements happen, also with APAC for their input and involvement. And as you'll see in the Capitol request, and Max is just joining us, working closely with them, you'll see in the Capitol request the plan for the Great Hall, which we'll have more to discuss. So we'll continue to invest where we can to improve access and participation at Town Hall. That concludes my report. I thank the board for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, new business Select Board member questions?
So, Mr. Chair, my apologies for not bringing this up under announcements, but it totally, I didn't even think about it until he was mentioning, you know, like a public hearing. So this Saturday, here at the Town Hall at 10:30, will be the Veterans Day Ceremony, and then the post will start collecting the flags from the cemeteries after the meeting. So, and I will send a note to you guys so that you can post it on Facebook, but there will be, Post 139, the Air American Legion Post here in town, will hold the ceremony for the veterans here in the monument area on 10:30 on Saturday.
Thank you. Thank you for that update.
All right. If there's no other questions, or...
No, we got meeting minutes.
Oh, okay, the way you said that, I was just like...
Next up would then be the approval of meeting minutes for October 15th, 2024.
I didn't see any issues.
I found no issues either.
Same.
So I'll make a motion that...
Meeting minutes on Tuesday, October 15th, 2024, be approved as submitted?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. And with that...
Mr. Chair, if there's nothing else, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.